Well, good evening. I'd like to call to order the Fridley Public School Board's meeting for February 20th, 2018. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. I'd start with, do I have a motion to approve the agenda for February 20th?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Prueado, seconded by Thornton, to approve the agenda for February 20th, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next on our agenda is a spotlight on recognition, beginning with the Employee of the Month.
It is my pleasure to introduce the Employee of the Month this year, or this month, which is our own Ms. Lori Andler. This is what David Weber, who nominated her, said on February, "Our February 2018 Employee of the Month is the unsung hero of the multitude of events and activities, a person whose work and professionalism serves as the catalyst for the many teams that comprise the district's administration. She is relied on heavy by many because we know she will get the job done and do it well. This person might be quiet during many events she assists with, but is a true Fridley tiger who, with grit, passion, and calm leadership, guides the behind-the-scenes needs. You can always count on her to know who needs to do what per each meeting and keep an eye on your timeline with a smile. Beyond that, she is one of the most supportive and good-hearted people we could have the pleasure working with. She continually goes the extra mile to ensure the success of district goals and needs, and I think this group of people also would also applaud this February 2018 Employee of the Month, Ms. Andler. Congratulations."
Yay!
How many shades of red can we get her to go?
More, more.
Alright, next up, we have superintendent and staff reports with a lovely presentation by the Hayes Group.
Lovely. Here we go.
And I'll include you as lovely in that, John, so.
Thank you. So, good evening, guys. So, we're gonna do a little different spin on our, our school presentation this year than we have in other years. I brought a few giraffes with me tonight, so each of them are going to be sharing a little bit about our school. But before we get going, I wanted to answer the question that you all have been wondering for a long time, what is it with the giraffes, anyway, right? So, it doesn't take people very long, once they land in our school, to see that that's going on. Right when you walk in the front door, we've got about a 12-foot statue of a giraffe that we've painted, and we decorate him and things from time to time, and it has become our mascot over the years, but not very many people really know the story about how it all came to be. About three years ago, it was about this time of the year, I walked into the office at the end of a day, sort of on a Thursday afternoon, and there was a gentleman in there. And Julie, our secretary, said to me, she said, "John, I want you to meet the guy who invented the giraffe." And I knew exactly who it was. It was Dr. Dean Albertson, and I'd never met Dean before, I'd only heard his name. And he was, he stopped by school just to stop in. You know, he worked at Hayes for a while, and he and I spent about an hour together just talking about the good old days and what Hayes was like back in 1972, 1974. And he told me the story about how the giraffe came to be, and this story kind of goes like this. He, he received a grant, an arts grant, and he had in his mind to build a sculpture of a, of a giraffe, and he wanted to commission this artist to do it, and he had an example and everything. He took it to the superintendent, and the superintendent said, "Are you out of your mind? There's, there's just no way we're gonna do this whole giraffe thing." And, you know, as he tells it, I'm sure it's, the story's gotten a little richer over the years, right? And they end up agreeing on, maybe the height is what they were debating. He wanted it 100 feet tall, it ended up to be 20 feet tall, something like that. But about a year later, this giraffe sculpture landed in the middle of the courtyard at Hayes, and it is still standing today. And that was about 1974, I think, is when that started. And after that time, the giraffe made its way in and out of the culture of Hayes. There was another giraffe sculpture that was built a few years after that, made out of iron. It was in the front yard. In 2002, a new principal was brought in, he promptly got rid of it because it was a safety issue. That'd have been me, I was just trying to disguise my identity.
And safety issue because kids were climbing on it?
Yeah, and it was metal and rusty and sharp edges and stuff like that. Anyway, so it made its way through, you know, several years. In 1989, something great happened to Hayes Elementary. Hayes won the National School of Excellence Award, and in 1989, that was a big deal. That was probably, you're talking about one or two schools in the state each year would earn that notoriety. And Dr. Lee Switzer was the principal at that time, and Lee kept this giraffe thing going. The kids during that era named this giraffe that really didn't, he wasn't really real yet, hang on, that's coming, but they named him TJ. And an artist was commissioned to do a rendering of TJ, and that was done. And that then weaved its way through t-shirts and sweatshirts for probably almost 20 years. In about 2004, the principal at the time, that would have been me, started wondering, how can we take this giraffe thing to the next level? And what I had always envisioned was a mascot, a real collegiate kind of mascot, you know, the kind that can tussle with the gopher, you know?
Right.
Something like that, right? And then try to find a company that makes a giraffe mascot like that. Well, it took me about two years to find the right company, and then it took me another year to convince the PTO that this was gonna be a really, really great idea, okay? And they acquiesced in time, and we spent some money, and we bought this beautiful giraffe costume, and now we've got this incredible giraffe mascot, who everybody rushes to whenever we have a school event, but we don't have a name for him. So, enter in the name contest. And we spent about a couple of months, I think, guys, right, thinking about names, and we let kids come up with names, and, you know, we had a couple adult names, which were like names of African giraffes that stood for something, like, "All the kids are gonna love this." And the unanimous winner, hands down, you know, 490 votes to three, was the name Jack, okay? First graders came up with it because giraffes are joyful, awesome, courageous, and kind.
Aww.
And that was their acronym. And when, and so we took a, we took a Friday where we do our monthly kickoffs, and Jack was introduced, and when the kids heard that that was his name, you would have thought Justin Timberlake landed or something like that, because they just, they just screamed, and it was a lot of fun. And since that time, he has made appearances at really every public event that we have. The only thing he hasn't done has been in the Fridley Parade, but he, I think that's probably gonna happen sooner or later. So, I wanted you to hear that story a little bit, because the giraffe is, the giraffe is really part of our heritage. And when I heard the stories of, of the giraffe, one of the things that I, I did is I did a little research on giraffes and wondered why, why would an elementary school want to dawn this? Now, we of course are the Fridley Tigers, and we embody that. We celebrate that, but most schools, too, elementary schools, have their own mascot as well. But this is some of the information that I came up with when I did my own quest into why would we want to be the giraffes. And here are some facts for you. Giraffes stand tall, and they're proud of who they are. Giraffes take care of each other. If you're in a group of giraffes, you're in good company, because they're gonna take care of you. Giraffes are not afraid to stick their necks out, and that's sort of a saying that we use quite often. They have huge hearts, science fact, right? They're, they're 22 pounds and they're two feet long, and they see things that no one else can. Now, what's interesting is that if we go back almost 50 years, when Dr. Dean Albertson envisioned this giraffe idea, his reasoning for wanting the giraffe in the center of the courtyard is to help kids see beyond the world they live in. And you would think back 50 years, how fitting is that for us today when we think about international mindedness and trying to teach kids about the world that's beyond the one they live in? So, that story and that, 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 that character that is the giraffe is something that weaves its way in and through our heritage and our hearts. And we, when people leave, we have a saying at Hayes, "Once you're a giraffe, you're always a giraffe." So, with that, I'm gonna turn this over. I already did that, didn't I, to Candace?
So, I got the G in giraffe for goals. So, we have new goals this year, which are very exciting for us. The new goal is shifted because of a new assessment, which we're really excited about, through FastBridge. Our goals were written based on a number of performance and increasing that percentage of kids each year. So, as a classroom teacher, which I was for many years, you kind of felt like you work really hard to get your kids where they get to that percentage, and then you get a new batch of kids, and their percentage was different. But your percentage was based on the kids you had last year. So, it just felt like defeating every year when you're working really, really hard. So, we're really cognizant this year of taking those goals so that they, teachers could own them and own with their kids. So, they have, that new assessment is much shorter. It's still an adaptive test, but we wanted to avoid the overtesting. But yet felt the need to continue to screen the kids three times a year. So, it's a much shorter assessment for both reading and math. And it's based on moving tiers opposed to, so that we can close that gap. And teachers can really own that. They have their group of kids, and they know how many kids they need to move tiers. We're just in the middle of it now, so we're kind of just seeing how it goes. We did our winter screening, and it went really well. It was very efficient. We didn't spend a lot of time. We didn't want to lose that instructional time, because we don't want to teach to the tests, but we still need to kind of keep tabs on where our kids are at. We've also implemented from two data meetings to four data meetings to really focus on that tier-one instruction, not just all their specialized support services, but what's going on with our kids in our classrooms as well, because we can't forget about everybody else that we service. So, in, you know, our two big data meetings, we are focusing on the kids at risk, but then the other two is the focus of kids who aren't getting specialized services. What can we do to meet their needs? And as math and reading intervention, we're working with those teachers to focus on strengthening their core-one instruction. And it really focuses on their kids' continual growth opposed to necessarily your teachers. We want those kids to continually grow as they move with us, and we can hand them off, and then the next year, hopefully have the next goal up. So, if they're at high risk, move to some risk, and then may move to low risk. And some way, someday get to that college pathway, which we got to change to exceeds, because we really would rather have to see them all exceed, no matter where they're at. So, bring that up to the next, which would be our I. Just the arrow, right? Yep. There you go.
Hi, I'm T. Notley. I'm the math coach at Hayes Elementary, and I'm excited to share about some of the inquiry that's happening in our school. This is the second year of Number Talks that we've been doing, both at Hayes and Stevenson, but Number Talks is an excellent way to bring in inquiry through math, knowing that there's a lot of different ways to solve our math problems. And as you can see on some of the pictures we have, we have our kindergartners doing Number Talks using vocabulary that our fourth graders are able to use, too. So, it's really exciting to hear the vocabulary travel through the grade levels from kindergarten through fourth grade. We also had first graders doing multiplication, and we have second graders doing many ways. Can I just keep backing up? It'll be outdoors. It'll be good. But you can see that the Number Talks is a great way to get our students to think flexibly about numbers and solving using various strategies that math is social. There's not just one way to solve a problem. And so, that's one way that we're building an inquiry with our math, but also, we're building in other really great, rich math tasks, including three-act math, where you get some clues to solve. So, you start out with a problem, and you find ways to solve them. We've been using a lot of the Joe Bowler mathematical mindset, so that there's presenting patterned problems, finding out different ways to solve it. It brings in some great creative thinking with math, hands-on manipulatives to get them creating. And then also, we've been doing a lot of, a lot of different things to get the students creating their own learning, to get them using dialogue, talking, discussion. So, the inquiry through math has, has been a great, a great way to teach our math this year.
Hi, I'm Ariel, and R is for responsiveness. So, you hear a lot of acronyms, CLR, so it's for culturally linguistic responsive teaching. So, the main thing for this teaching strategy is validating. So, we validate, affirm, build, and bridge with our students. And in Hayes, we have this plan. So, first thing you want to, thank you, build a relationship with your students. So, we use outrageous love. And the first cultural model, we have 10 teachers in this first, this first round. And then we, also in our school, we focus on five-to-one ratio of positive comments, greeting at the door, and smile and be nice. So, this year, we start with our coaching model one, and then by April, we will start second round and third one, and gradually, all the teachers will have CLR training.
I'll just stand back here. I have a teacher voice, come on. So, A is for anchors of appreciation, and we took the, as you can see, the word anchor, and this is from our Teach Like a Pirate, Lead Like a Pirate work that we've been doing. And I'm gonna talk mainly about the appreciation, and yes, I had to write some things down, because that's how I roll. But we've really kept the lens on the appreciation at Hayes this year. So, a lot of that is reflected in when we're observing in our staffs and doing our walkthroughs and observations with our staff, the giraffe spots, and the ways that we recognize and appreciate our students, and in many other ways at our school, really just trying to highlight that feeling of collaboration between our kids and our students, and anyone who walks in through our doors. As we just go down also this path, as Ariel just mentioned, with the CLR, and really wanting to honor and validate all of our student voices that we have in our school, as well, again, our families and everyone that comes through our doors. We also really have a culture which is supported by supports across the board. You've heard talk about all the supports that we have in for our students, but there's also support for the staff. There's a depth that the teachers and staff go to at our school to aid all of our students in a multitude of ways. And lastly, reflection. One thing that is really appreciated is the amount of reflection that our teachers put into their own teaching, and that reflection is then shown forth into what our kids are doing when we watch kids reflect on their own work or reflect on their relationship with their colleagues or their friends and stuff. So, from teachers reflecting to the kids, that is a really rich part of our fabric at Hayes. And so, anchors of appreciation and really focusing on that appreciation, appreciation of everything that happens within the circle and now the four walls, our pods and everything of our school, is a cornerstone. And I just put the quote there, that appreciation can make a day, even change a life. Your willingness to put it into words is all that is necessary. Thank you.
So, F is for family engagement, and this year, we've had two nights with family engagement night. So, we had family math night this year. We served 500 meals, and with that, they, we had a, a math room for every grade level. And so, they could, if they had multiple families, they could go to each of the multiple classrooms to see and play the games. But we sent home over 200 games to be played at home, so that we can continue the math discussions in the evening with families and encourage math at home.
And we also had a family literacy night, where we also served about a 500 meals, I think 510, if I remember. So, we might have been...
You won.
And we were able to send home over 1,000 books. We had, you know, around 400 people there, which is about 200 families, and they have more than one book at home, and that was just the ultimate goal. We had a lot of different fun activities to engage parents with kids in literacy. Jenny Markhart, our fabulous Title I para, put together a lip-sync battle, and, you know, kids are reading, and they're rhyming, and it was just, the energy in that jam was amazing. I was not there, I had influenza A, but it was super, super awesome, and it couldn't have happened without the amazing people at Hayes.
I think it's fair to say, too, that the family engagement is not just the family of Hayes, but it's also the family of teachers at Hayes, who work together very, very tightly to get these things going. And it comes from all support staff, all the way through the teaching staff, and, and with the fun. So, that's, you know, of course, we're fun. We're fun people.
We are fun.
It kind of goes along with our leader, who is very content dressing up for us. So, you're gonna see a lot of pictures of our, the leadership in our building being dressed up and bringing in the fun in and having the students want to be at our school. We have kickoff shows with Norman, with character counts, and then bringing in a lot of our components of the PYP. Through that, you can see a lot of our AdSis staff. We have, you know, "If you can't be a giraffe, be a pirate." Then we have Cuckoo Kangaroo came this year to encourage learning through movement. We also have a lot of, we have our staff doing, teaching cooperation through physical education. You can see our reading team up there. We have mascots, I think, for every single year we've had readings. So, you know, if you can't wear a pirate or a giraffe, why not wear a superhero costume? Or a big hat. So, and we also have, of course, technology that our students are learning through, highly motivating, so we have lots of coding and, and so forth. Well, we can't have just one slide for fun.
No.
We're gonna have two slides for fun. But I also, we have a, you know, a school cohesiveness, and the school cohesiveness really encourages, brings us together as a learning community. So, you could see that we were famous, you know, bringing the school chanton.
It was like 40,000 views.
Why not?
That's the most famous.
Fifty, oh, sorry, 50,000. We have cops in the cafe who come and eat our meals with our students monthly. Bi-weekly, is it?
Yeah, almost.
Probably bi-weekly.
I feel like he's enjoyed it so much, he's even taken upon himself to come back.
Right.
He knows those kids.
He likes good food, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, too.
Can't get enough government cheese, right? That's good food. We have community support through donations, a lot of them. We have a lot of, the community comes in bringing some of the arts to encourage our, our arts program, too. So, with that, together, we have a, we have a community of risk-takers in our, in our building, who go out of their comfort zone and do some great things. So, it's a lot of fun at our school.
My name is Kirsten Wickman, and I'm the International Baccalaureate Coordinator at Hayes. So, I get to talk about our exuberance for the IB. And I would say, all of the things that my colleagues have talked about are the things that fall under the umbrella of the IB. And it's fun to just hear those concepts and those words that are a part of the IB framework, being talked about in all of those things, that we're encouraging our students to be risk-takers, we're building community, we're understanding what our culture is and the culture of the people around us. We're trying, we're figuring ways to live together and understand each other as well. There's a big commitment to fostering deep thinking, critical thinking, looking at things in different perspectives, making connections between different things. And then really getting students to be highly engaged and highly interested in bringing theirs, themselves and their lives into the classroom and into our class, into our school community. And we're really ultimately trying to do our best to prepare our students for their, for their future. And finally, S is for success. We feel really good about our specialist model, and this is also part of being an international baccalaureate school. We really work to have a well-rounded, balanced education.
It's also for success of reading and math interventions, as well as ELO behaviors specialists and peer support. Our monthly kickoff celebrations with Norman and Giraffe Awards.
And we have giraffe spots that giving out every, to every student, and every morning there are drawings for a lot of students to get a giraffe's class reward.
And we've developed a five common expectations that we speak school-wide, and now comes your participation in this, because you have to participate in our expectations, because they are to be safe, be polite, be cooperative, be responsible, and the big one, be kind. So, we teach those to our kids throughout the course of the whole year.
And in everything that we do, we have an emphasis on family. So, thanks for letting us come to this.
Thank you, guys.
Nice job.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, no, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was...
Just next time you have to wear your Hayes sweatshirt, too.
Or the giraffe costume.
And, and here, what I'm wondering is culturally responsive. What's the gender of Jack?
He's a he.
He's a he, he's a jack.
Well, I don't know.
Jack, giraffe?
Jackal.
Born this morning?
Jacqueline.
It could be Jacqueline.
Could be Jackie.
Jackie?
Jackie?
Oh. With that, the quote comes out. No, thank you so much, all of you, for coming.
You're tripping up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so next we'll move on to business action items, and the first action item is a resolution for School Board Recognition Week.
It is my pleasure to give each of you a certificate worth framing in recognition of February 19th to 23rd, School Board Appreciation and Recognition Week. And there is also a resolution, and may I read that right now? Whereas the School Board 14 recognizes the importance of public education in our community, whereas 14 appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establishes our policies to ensure an efficient and effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to our state and federal government and ensuring compliance with state and federal law, whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, talents as advocates for our schoolchildren, and whereas our school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and public expectation. Therefore, be it resolved that the school district recognizes and salutes its members by proclaiming this week as School Board Recognition Week. So, we thank you for your service.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, motion by Prueado, seconded by Thornton, to approve the resolution for claiming February 19th to February 23rd, 2018, as School Board Recognition Week. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, excuse me, it's a resolution, please. Lori, could you call the rule?
Aye.
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 And the resolution passes. Next up is a resolution accepting gifts. We are fortunate every month to receive gifts from the community, and for this past month, Fridley High School received a total of $100 through the Wells Fargo Your Cause LLC. Also donating to the Nutritional Services Department for a total of $500 was Passion Church. The following persons donated to Hayes Elementary for a total of $166.75, Applebee's and the Apple American Group. Donating to the Fridley Middle School Band Program for a total of $300 were Lawrence and Jean Cook, Leland and Julius Campanan, Jody and Dan Murray, Baram and Jane Nicrod, Carolyn Nolan, and Michael and Linda Papillon. With that, do I have a motion to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
Motion to accept.
Second.
We have a motion by Prueado, seconded by Stark, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, excuse me, it's a resolution again. I tell you, I'm gonna get it down one of these days.
Aye.
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 Okay, now that I've got all the resolutions out of the way, we'll just move to the motions. Our final motion in the business action item is for approval of the bid for the summer 2018 parking lot project. Mr. Hammer?
Yeah, so tonight, we have a bid award in front of you for your approval. It's for our summer 2018 parking lot construction projects that will take place at the middle school and the high school. Batuminous Roadways was the low bidder for $798,333 on the base bid, with $14,454,000 on alternate one and alternate two. We are putting together the suggested motion to approve all the projects, including both alternates, as the project came in within budget. So, we have that in front of you tonight.
Alright, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the bid?
Motion to approve the bid.
Second.
I have a motion by Prueado, seconded by Stark, to approve the bid for the summer 2018 parking lot project. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up is a consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the School Board Business Meeting and Work Session held on January 16th, the monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments... amendments, leaves of absence, termination, resignations and retirements, the M D E user recertification for Lori Handler and Dr. Peggy Flathman as our identified official with authority, a overnight field trip to the East Coast for the American History for the seventh and eighth graders. And that will be to Washington DC, New York, and I think also Gettysburg for June 11th to the 16th of 2019. The Fridley High School Choir and Band Students Overnight Field Trip to Chicago on March 22nd through the 24th of 2018. And the resolution from the American Indian Parent Committee for approval of our American Indian programming. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Prueado, seconded by Stark to approve the consent agenda of the routine action items that I have listed. Any further discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up, we have written information, starting with student enrollment.
We had a discussion in work session today about enrollment projections for our preliminary budget for 1819. However, in your packet is our February 1 numbers as we typically bring them to you. You can see at the bottom, very bottom, it is, it looks like we are well above our projections. However, if you pull out about the, about 90 of those pre-K students, that takes the number down to almost exactly what our projections are. So even though in the end they will be part of it, they do not count as a full F T E. So I think that we will, you know, you know, very well hit our target, if you will, for this year. And, and I'm glad that we ended up pushing that down slightly for our revised budget for this year.
Thank you. Next up is reports from school board members, beginning with the Northwest Suburban Integrations School District Joint Powers Board Meeting that was held on January 17th. I attended that one. January, generally is our, our organizational meeting. So it was mostly taken up with talking out, introducing the new members of it. We had, I believe, three new delegates of the seven districts. And then we also go through all the officers' positions and things like that. And I was once again elected to be the chair. So I'll be serving as chair for one more year in that, as well as also on the joint working group. So you're off the hook from having to be part of the joint working group either.
Phew, thank you.
We did go over a little bit of the programming, following up with what's going on, mostly with the lottery program for the magnet schools. And things are progressing quite nicely with the initial lottery that took place. There will be a secondary lottery that takes place in March. So if there are families still out there that are looking to the magnet school programming that is offered through Northwest Suburban, we'll have a second round of applications coming in for March. Next would be the Association of Metropolitan School District's Board Meeting held February 2nd.
I will intervene on that.
Because Mary Kay attended, I did not attend that one.
Mary Kay attended and I missed that. And this was our legislative preview. And so our legislators were invited to that. Representative Bernardi was able to be there. Senator Lane was not able to be there. So we had a chance to talk with her and also hear from about four different school districts on things like cross subsidy and the issues that are on the platform of AMSD. So with that, and then we also heard from the leadership of both minority and majority party in the Senate and in the House and talking about preview. And of course, they were not very optimistic about much money being in, in, in operation for us for this year. But, you know, we're interested in some, some of the conversations that we had. One of the, I think it was Mounds View had a pretty good presentation on doing, having board authority for renewing an operating levy. And although the presentation was very well done, I'm not sure that that is anything that, that the panel was willing to entertain this year. So, you know, I think even though our public says that's not, you know, let's not waste time, every one of them have passed in the last three or four years. So, but nevertheless, probably not something for this, this meeting, this session. So we'll wait and see. Forecast comes out on February 28th and there may be some money, but their priority will be in making sure that Minnesota taxes, our tax laws reflect that of the federal and not overburdening the Minnesota taxpayer. But also, you know, making sure that, you know, the taxes are there, but if there is any money, T R A needs to get funded in an appropriate way. That was a promise that the state made to people and that is not being funded correctly at this particular time.
All right, thank you. Finally, there'll be Schools for Equity in Education's Meeting held February 9th.
Okay, there was a panel there discussing preserving concurrent enrollment courses. We had Robert Lowe, who was with Dual Enrollment in Perkins Partnership K through 12, Jessica Espinoza. She was with the Minnesota State Colleges and Universities and Michael Werner, Post-Secondary Planning Coordinator for Mounds View Public Schools. And they discussed how to ensure that secondary teachers would be ready to teach concurrent classes by 2022. Wait, yeah, 2022, we are in 2018 deadline. Next, we had a couple of politicians, Eric Pratt and Sandra Erickson. And they both discussed the education policy and the priorities for this year, 2018. They both, that's focused would be the, they're called Aaron's Law, which requires all public schools to implement a prevention-oriented child sexual abuse program for sexual exploitation. So they both highlighted the importance of that. Also, Senator, Senator Pratt discussed about reform healthcare and insurance, talking about the special education numbers and increasing and what to, how to best resolve that, teacher licensure reform. Sandra, Representative Eric Erickson also discussed that working on modification, the E S O, which would align with the World's Best Force Plan instead of the other way around, it should model that. So, yeah.
That was kind of the highlight of those meetings.
Thank you. Next up, important future school board dates. AMSD's Board Meeting will be held March 2nd, 2018 from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. in the Tyus Conference Center. The next Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting will be held March 7th, 2018, 6:00 p.m. at the Bel Air School. And our next Fridley Public School Boards Meeting will be held March 20th with the work session beginning at 5:30 in City Hall Conference Room A, open forum at 7:00 p.m. in Conference Room A, and our business meeting here in the council chambers at 7:30. That, if anybody has anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Prueado, seconded by Stark to adjourn the meeting. Any further comment? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:09.